Okay. Good evening. Welcome, everybody. So this special board meeting of the Board of Education for June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three is called to order. So the superintendent is recommending dismissal of educator Damon Keller on the grounds of insubordination, neglect of duty, and inadequate performance. By statute, the board must vote on the dismissal of contract educators. Before this meeting, Mr. Keller attended two pre-dismissal Lautermill hearings, meetings with his union representative on March fourteenth and May seventeenth. In addition, on June sixth, Mr. Keller and his union representative met with the superintendent. As part of that process, Mr. Keller was offered a pre-termination hearing per board policy, five point two zero point one three two P, as part of each of the two notices to recommend his dismissal. He did not request a hearing either time. This issue has been scheduled for a board vote on June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. In advance of that meeting, the board scheduled an executive session per O R S one nine two dot six six zero two B to consider Mr. Keller's dismissal and notified him of that fact. As state law allows, Mr. Keller notified the district that he was requesting the board's meeting be held as a public meeting. Mr. Keller, during this meeting that you have requested be public, we will discuss the investigations and findings related to your alleged misconduct in some detail. As I think you know, usually those matters are kept confidential by the district. So before we start the meeting, I just want to give you an opportunity to, again, the board can convene an executive session if you choose to, to discuss the findings and investigations, or we can continue in a public meeting. And I just want to confirm your decision for a public meeting. Okay. Thank you. So in light of that decision to proceed, Mr. Keller, we will go forward. So I want to note that this meeting tonight is not a hearing. It's a session for the board to consider dismissal of an employee. Mr. Keller will be allowed to address the board as well. So just as a few reminders, the board, staff, and Mr. Keller are bound by FERPA protections for any student-related information. The session is only to consider Mr. Keller's dismissal. Before we get started, I want to remind the board that our purpose is to hear from district staff why they are recommending dismissal of Mr. Keller's employment. And we will not be taking public testimony this evening. So we're going to start with the district staff, who will walk us through the reasons for making the recommendation. And then following hearing from staff, Mr. Keller, if you choose to, may provide comments as well. And then we'll open it up for board conversation and questions.
Chair Scott, can I just clarify, since this is a public meeting, there is nothing about the personnel information that we have received that is confidential other than anything that pertains to individual students?
There's some other guidances in?
Chair Scott?
So, yeah, that is correct in terms of of the notices before us today. There was an email from Council Large, from, yeah, General Counsel Large, just a couple of hours ago, which is just a small point that you may want to just take a look at. With that, I think I'll, I think I'm turning it over to staff.
Good evening, directors. Checking that, see? Good evening, there we go. My name is Margaret Calvert, I'm one of the assistant superintendents here in Portland Public Schools, and I'm joined by?
John Franco, I'm the chief of schools, and also we do have Principal Ryerson online as well.
We are before you tonight as you consider the dismissal of a P P S employee, Damon Keller. His dismissal has been recommended following two investigations of misconduct. As you know, recommendations to the board to terminate a contract educator are infrequent. Indeed, they are serious matters that the district does not take lightly. We recognize that staff play a significant role in our school communities, and the recommendation to dismiss an educator impacts not only the individual, but also the community at large. The reason we are here today is due to a pattern of misconduct that has impacted the students at Oakley Green, with the latest misconduct being a series of insubordination and unethical behavior in the past year. Mr. Keller was notified in May twenty-second, or May, excuse me, May of two thousand and twenty-two, in a reprimand that he would serve a suspension in the upcoming school year, and was on notice that further misconduct would likely lead to dismissal. The recommendation for dismissal follows the initial findings that during the two-two, twenty-three school year, Mr. Keller repeatedly engaged in insubordination and unethical behavior by taking alleged sick leave in order to work for a different employer over the, over at least five weeks during the current school year. While that investigation was happening, Mr. Keller then repeated the same dishonesty and insubordination in order to judge a dance competition in North Carolina. Oakley Green students needed Mr. Keller in the classroom, and P P S expects its educators to model integrity, use sick leave legitimately, and engage honestly with their principal. In light of Mr. Keller's prior discipline history over several years and following progressive discipline, the district recommends dismissal. I'll take a few moments to walk through the specifics that have happened, leading to us to this point. I want to just reiterate that the conduct in the past year was during a time when he was under notice that any additional misconduct could lead to a recommendation that we have before you tonight. In the fall of two thousand and twenty-two, Mr. Keller requested permission to be absent from work at Oakley Green every Wednesday afternoon for a period of roughly two months from January through the end of February, to perform work for a different employer specifically as a residency at Odyssey with North Star Dance Company. As those absences were during the regular school day and at times that Mr. Keller was expected to teach at Oakley Green, the principal denied that request. Despite that denial, Mr. Keller was then absent on Wednesday afternoons beginning January fourth. He attempted to use sick time to cover many of those absences, and once questioned, converted several sick hours to unpaid leave. In total, Mr. Keller was absent from Oakley Green on the following Wednesdays, January fourth, January eleventh, January eighteenth, January twenty-fifth, and February first. In addition to the obvious pattern of being absent each Wednesday afternoon for which he had asked for and was denied leave, on January seventeenth, Mr. Keller notified Oakley Green principal that he was ill. Despite that, time records from Odyssey show that he reported to work for his other employer at Odyssey on January the eighteenth. Time records from Odyssey reflect that he was there from one oh three P M. to two oh nine P M., and the full duration of the residency class. The investigation concluded that he was, that he either was dishonest about being sick or exposed students and staff to the illness when he was too sick to work at Oakley Green. Either way, his behavior violates district protocols and likely state law. All employees are expected to report regularly for work, to be honest with their supervisor, and to act ethically and with integrity. Mr. Keller's multiple absences to work, a second job directly impacted and harmed the educational experience of the students at Oakley Green. While the disciplinary process for the Wednesday absences was ongoing, Mr. Keller again requested time off of work between March twenty-second and twenty-fourth, the week prior to spring break, to judge a dance competition and teach classes in North Carolina. As those days were part of the regular school calendar for Oakley Green, that request was again denied. Despite that denial, Mr. Keller was absent on those days. The director of North Carolina Dance Production confirmed that he was president in North Carolina, March twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth. During the investigatory process, Mr. Keller claimed that he was ill during those days and that he flew to North Carolina on Friday night, March twenty-fourth, after his work week had ended. The district requested that he provide proof of this, and he failed to do so. In light of the confirmation of his presence in the North Carolina on March twenty-fourth, he could not have flown from Oregon that evening. Faced with these facts, Mr. Keller still denies that he engaged in any wrongdoing. On April third, Mr. Keller used the district's family communication email platform, Synergy, to email twenty-seven P P S families to share his ongoing personnel issues. Any personal use of that system is not permitted by district policy. In using progressive discipline, prior discipline is relevant to determining the severity of the discipline for the current findings. As outlined in the twenty-day notice letters, Mr. Keller has a lengthy disciplinary history, and I'm going to walk through some of those pieces with you. On March sixteenth, two thousand and sixteen, he was issued a written reprimand for misconduct for physically engaging with a student and causing pain to the student when the student hit him in the chest instead of giving him a high five. On August twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, a written reprimand for misconduct for twisting a student's arm behind their back when they interrupted him in causing the student pain, and also throwing shoes at students to get their attention. On August night, twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, a second written reprimand was also shared for misconduct for making dignity-denying comments about female students bodily functions, which may include menstruation while in the restroom, and also repeatedly using curse words and communicating with students. On April twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, the Teacher Standards and Practice Commission ordered a public reprimand and two-year licensure probation for gross neglect of duty based on some of the conduct that was part of the P P S prior written reprimands. On May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, a final written reprimand and a five-day suspension for misconduct was issued to Mr. Keller. In that letter, it outlines that Mr. Keller left thirty-one students in class unattended to follow a student who had left the classroom and was not in crisis, and did not use any means, radio, phone, Google chat, to seek assistance to, for help with the student who had left the classroom. He then spent several minutes talking the student away from his classroom and leaving the remainder of the students unattended. During his absence, a fight occurred, and a student suffered a serious injury. This conduct again occurred during the two-year T S P C probation. In the fall, he met with Principal Ryerson to review the outline of this final written reprimand and to plan for the five-day suspension, to how that would be served in the fall. So I want to just highlight that where we are today is in the summary of a series of events that happened over a period of time, most recently in the last school year, where Mr. Keller was under, given due notice that any prior or any further misconduct, excuse me, could learn, could lead to additional concerns and dismissed, and dismissal or recommendation for dismissal. Following the investigatory process this fall and into the winter, the district determined that Mr. Keller should be dismissed for insubordination, neglect of duty, and inadequate performance. Regular attendance is essential to the duties and expectation of all professional educators. Professional educators cannot perform their core function of instructing students and delivering educational experiences that enable students to grow and excel if they are not in their classrooms. All Oregon educators are expected to be daily role models for children, are expected to maintain the dignity of the profession, and to exemplify personal integrity and honesty. I just want to highlight that I recognize the important role that we all play as educators in Portland Public Schools. Our families send their students to us to be in our care. Part of being in our care is recognizing the dignity of our students, interacting with them in ways that affirm who they are, to not use derogatory language with students, to not engage in physical conduct with students, and then also to act with integrity in working with their supervisors. Over a period of time, what we see is that there was a series of actions that were taken by Mr. Keller that led to some progressive actions by the district, that most recently, in the fall, was a five-day suspension. We come here tonight to say that the behavior continued in the, in two thousand and twenty-two and twenty-three, and that as a result of the accumulation of these acts over the last year in particular, that we are in the unfortunate position today of recommending dismissal.
Community is right here. Don't talk about the community, the community is right here.
I'm gonna need to, so I'm gonna need to ask that the audience not yell out, please, as we, as we conduct this, this meeting. Thank you, Ms. Calvert, is there anything more that staff want to add?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Keller, would you like to address the board at this time?
Yeah, the students are here, you can talk about other topics.
They can correct the misinformation being shared.
Go ahead.
Thank you, everyone, for coming and supporting me when you could have been anywhere else. I know this isn't the ideal way to spend your Wednesday evening, so I hope to be brief. As the board considers the narrative provided by my current admin and the district, I would also like to ask the board members to consider this narrative as well. Consider this narrative that I was approved and supported for residency for the Odyssey School through P P S for the same Native American company I'm the lead dance director for, not artistic director, for back in two thousand and nineteen by admin Christina Howard and team. Consider this narrative that I was also approved and supported for a five-day unpaid leave that I planned on having during spring break of two thousand and twenty-two, just not, just to not use my hours allotted to me through my employment by P P S in two thousand and twenty-two by admin Dr. Tanya McKee and team. Please consider this narrative that I asked for the same approval and support for residency for the Odyssey School through P P S for my still Native American company that I'm the lead dance director for, not the artist director, to my current admin and her secretary, and I did not get the same approval and support from. I received a response from my admin that I was to, quote, acquire a sub at Oakley Green, which would, which would require me to put in for leave of these days. However, since I am taking the leave to perform duties related to your business, I don't believe that there are any, that there are any types of leaves that would apply. Consider this narrative that there was never a definitive no, that I'm not approved and supported by my admin, rather, it was coercion, and that, and that was my admin, quote, laying the grounds for me to walk on, end quote. Consider this narrative that on my way home, I stopped at Odyssey and signed in when I did not have to. I could, I could have just used my P P S badge if I wanted to misuse any sick leave hours, but I stayed accountable. Consider this narrative that I took the advice from my admin and secretary at different times of using sick leave for dates I entered in A S O P and filled out a short leave form for when I exhausted other leaves allotted to me. Consider this narrative that when I found out I was placed under investigation for misuse of sick hours, I asked the senior partner, employee, and labor relations how to make this right and to take those hours off my next paycheck because I value my job and I do not want to breach any contract. Consider this narrative that I adjusted my short leave form to reflect sick hours for my children and I being sick on the dates in question and unpaid hours for the dates for the residency because I received no response from my question, but rather the same response from my current admin. To me, my intent was valid and in good faith. Consider this narrative that the teachers working for P P S are not children and should not need, quote, permission to operate in their career of study, but rather be approved and supported when using the P P S protocol of seven days of advanced notice. But I gave thirty days of advanced notice to and for approval and support, and I did not receive it from my current admin, but received approval and support from my previous admin in the last years. Consider this narrative that my current admin denied me permission for a three-day unpaid leave and recited the P P S handbook of page twenty-two that a second job is not excusable to miss your duties at your built at your school building, I'm paraphrasing, but I was approved by my previous admin just a year ago. Consider this narrative that I asked for clarification on what a second job is to my current admin, and I did not receive any response or support. Consider this narrative that I asked my TOSA for V A P A for clarification and support, specifically asking, quote, "How can an active dance professional still conduct if they aren't approved because not everything can happen on the weekend?" End quote. And I did not get, and I did not receive any support or response from my TOSA. Consider this narrative that I became sick and ended up not being able to travel for the dates in question during the work week in March. Consider the narrative that I did not fill out a short leave form for any dates in March because I was placed on administration leave, April eighth, at the end of third quarter, and then my mental health had shut me down, and I was gassed out. Consider this narrative that the hours I did not submit and claim for any days absent in March still ended up on my paycheck as paid, and I am currently being considered for dismissal as the outcome. Consider this narrative that my intent, as stated in the email to the parents of my graduating eighth-grade class at Oakley Green, was to only be transparent and never to rally the community against anything P P S is considering on my behalf. Consider this narrative that I have missed out on supporting my students, that I taught through a computer, that I missed out at their eighth-grade promotion this year, their end-of-the-year trip to Las Vegas that I conceived and created myself, and the curriculum through the eyes of hip-hop back in two thousand and eighteen at Oakley Green Middle School. I missed their clapout, I missed their audition space into Jefferson Dance Program. I missed their smile, their sass, their confinement in me, their trust in me, their love, and most importantly, my adoration for a group of young people that have overcome some tremendous hurdles. Please consider this narrative that I only serve, support, smile, and share my experiences with all of my students to encourage and inspire them that a P P S-born person of color, graduating from King Elementary, Whittaker Middle School, and Jefferson High School with honors, can make a lasting career of over twenty-five years with a free education in dance. Consider this narrative that I single-handedly did my job by inspiring our community of students to pursue dance into the high school level, whether it be dance team, cheer, lunch club, after-school club, or Jefferson dancers, or the J D twos, that I have given humans the platform to start something from the ground up because of their passion for it. Oakley Green dancers have a standing place with the Portland Trail Blazers annually for the last two years for performance. Oakley Green dancers have participated in the Junior Rose Parade, Saint John's Parade, and the Kitten Parade, were seen performing at Pioneer Courthouse Square in two thousand and twenty-two for a winter performance. Consider this narrative that P P S has professional dancers that have performed and are performing with Justin Timberlake, Janet Jackson, Michael Jackson, Beyonce, Britney Spears, Missy Elliott, Kamea Cabello, Justin Bieber, and Rihanna, to name a few, because of the teachings and tutelage I have received from a free education as a P P S student. Consider this narrative that I was given an opportunity, opportunity to work for P P S two years before I said yes to becoming a licensed teacher for the school district. Consider this narrative that I have on record that my misconducts in my previous years with P P S not to be used against me in the future because I did not agree with the agreement letter P P S constructed because the word stated in the letter painted the optics that I was the culprit in every misconduct, but I was only the reactor. But I signed that letter to keep my job with P P S because it's about the students. Please consider this narrative that through all my misconducts I have had with P P S, with some of the students, I have entered college, going back to school, and finishing my B A in performing arts and administration, holding a three-point-nine G P A, because I want to become a principal for P P S. Consider this narrative that I teach my students to follow the rules. I felt that I was using the proper protocols with the information provided. Consider this narrative that I want to finish out my education growth with P P S by becoming a principal to inspire the next generation, and the next generation, and the generation after that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, thanks for being here in your statement. At this point, I'm going to open it up to the board. Feel free to ask questions either of staff or of Mr. Keller.
So I have a couple of questions. And I think, you know, the accomplishments that you've done is, is great, is awesome. I think what you're doing for our kids is, is a, is a good thing. At the same time, just like we teach our kids, it's about accountability, right? And so I just want you to speak to some of the things that's, that was spoken about you as far as, for instance, the trip to North Carolina. It's stated in here that you left on a red eye, but you could not provide a confirmation. Can you speak to that whole?
I can speak to that. So I, I was given the opportunity to teach the twenty-second through the twenty-sixth of March. I became sick, so I was not able to go. The moving pieces of that from the twenty-second to the twenty-fourth were private instruction and a masterclass. So those were moving parts, that was easy to, to shift. The red eye, because the ticket was, the dates were for the twenty-second, my director said that I can go to the count, the ticket counter to get it just changed. Basically, I'm flying standby on a red eye to still get to North Carolina for the adjudication process. And that was happening before the weekend of March, the twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth. So that Friday was a red eye to North Carolina, and it was a paper ticket, and I don't keep those. I didn't at all think that I would need it to show proof.
Okay, so let's try to clear up some stuff. So here shows that you were there on the twenty-second.
I'm sorry?
On the twenty-fourth, after school.
That was Friday, yes.
And, but it was, and here it says that they have confirmation that you was there during the day to judge the competition.
I was not there for that competition for Friday. I got there Friday, and I, I have a testimony, a testament from my director that she can attest to that, that I judged the weekend, I, I came on the red eye.
And so, and I understand you went to the airport and got your ticket from there. And you didn't get it, and you, even though this was coming up, you couldn't go, you couldn't get a confirmation of the red eye ticket?
Get, I, I, there's no confirmation if I'm showing up to the ticket counter.
So I'm just, so full disclosure, I used to work for airlines, actually last year. And so when someone comes up and gets, have a ticket, whether they missed their flight or what have you, they print them a hard copy ticket to go through security, to get them boarding.
Correct.
That also keeps a record of that confirmation. And so I was, I was wondering, at some point, could you have not gotten, knowing this was coming up, have gotten that confirmation? So like, for instance, if you go on American Airlines or United Airlines, and you put in your confirmation number, it'll show all previous flights flown, even if it was done at the ticket counter.
So my, my confirmation was dated for the twenty-second through the twenty-sixth. And so when going to the ticket counter, they're not going to email me a confirmation because I'm going, doing it live and direct?
Right, but, so what happened, so?
You're saying, did I go before and get a ticket?
You say you flew on the twenty-fourth, right? So any record of flying is recorded the day you flew. Don't matter if you had a ticket for the twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third.
I understand.
It has a record that you flew on the twenty-fourth. With this coming up, why can you have went and got that confirmation for the day you have flown? Because it's federal law that they keep record of that stuff, like, three years. So that's all I'm asking, I just want to clear that up.
I, and again, I didn't feel that I needed to have that proof.
Even though they was asking for it?
Who's "they"?
Well, in the complaint here, it was, they was asking for proof that you flew on the red eye.
I, again, my, I thought my proof was only for the paper ticket, and that's the proof that I'm saying I didn't have when I was asked about it. I didn't call any airline and say, please print a record of, of my, my flight. I did not do that, no.
So when you were asked by the investigators for the proof, you didn't take any steps to try to get that proof from the airline?
No, because I just said I didn't keep my paper ticket, because that's what, in my head- No, because I just said I didn't keep my paper ticket because that's what I, to, in my head at that, in that moment, I'm thinking that that's the proof that they were wanting me to provide, the, a paper ticket and I didn't have that. I just throw those away.
So knowing that this is one of the things that we're looking at to go to your credibility, you have the option to go to the airport before the vote happens to get that information. So if you could do that, that would be so helpful.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hollins.
A question just maybe for district staff just about policy. So I assume a lot of our employees, um, have other, other jobs after this, school, not during the school day. Um, do, what's the district policy or protocol in the staff handbook about, um, jobs that are during, that might conflict with the work's schedule, knowing some people have set schedules, other people have left set schedules? So I'm curious what our policy is. What, or, or HR?
The statement is, um, is this on? There we go. Um, I believe it is in the employee handbook. And so as I hear the question, and I'll pull up the language from the employee handbook. The general statement is that a, um, uh, employee, uh, having another job should not impact their work and it is not a reason for absenteeism and various other pieces. But I'll pull, as I'm sitting here, I'll pull the exact language.
Um, Director Lowry, I believe you have your hand up.
We can't hear you.
Hear you right now. Director Lowry.
How about now?
Now we can hear you.
Great.
Now we can't hear you or see you. So I'm going to ask the audience not to yell out questions, please. Director Lowry, uh, we can see you again, but we can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
We heard you for a moment, but not now.
Oh, that's because I muted myself, so that's why you couldn't hear me. I'm so sorry for the technical issues. I'm sorry I'm not there. We just got home from a family event. Mr. Keller, you had mentioned that you want to be a principal and I heard in your narrative, you said that, you know, you had been supported by administrations in the past, but the new administration did not support you in the ways that you had hoped. Uh, my question for you is, how, how would you respond if when you become a principal, you have a staff member that you say no to and then they, um, they feel, because it seems to me like the administration didn't support you in the way you had hoped and then you went ahead with these planned events. Um, what would be your response as a principal if a staff person took a denial that you had given them and went ahead anyway?
I, I feel and believe I wouldn't be in that position because I would do a hundred percent support for my team of educators.
Especially educators of color.
We need to support, period. And my, my feelings about the not support, I felt like I was a child and I need to ask for permission.
That's, that's not my question and I've heard your narrative. I've heard what you said there, but what I'm asking is if you were an administrator and you had an educator come to you and you
He answered that. You're interrupting him.
For a reason said, this is not going to work. How would you handle that? I mean, I understand that you feel like you didn't get the support you wanted from your administrator and that you would do things differently in your specific case. But let's imagine an educator came for you for something that you didn't feel was, you were able to support. Um, and they went ahead anyway. Like, what would your response be?
My response would to approach said teacher, have a conversation first before going to HR about any findings and wanting to investigate deeper. I would want to get an understanding first. If I receive, if I were to tell one of my staff members no and they went against that, quote unquote. Um, I felt, again, that I did not go against anything. I used the proper protocols that I felt that were there for me.
So can I, is it related to the same?
Related, kind of going back to why, why this, it would be more for the principal? Why, after two years of being approved, what, what changed?
That's my question.
In between the years that were approved, I know the administrator changed, but I'm just wondering if there's like a concrete reason.
And I guess I would add to that question. Were they actually approved or was it just a, a verbal, hey, I'm thinking about doing this next year? I mean, I don't know the timeline for asking for those types of leaves. So was it formally approved and then the administrators changed or was it informally discussed?
So I think we, um, I'm not going to be able to speak directly to prior decisions at this particular time. I will speak to the understanding in our, in our employee handbook here and in the collective bargaining agreement. So the collective bar, uh, bargaining agreement states that applicable, applicable leaves are only to be used for their intended use. Uh, paid and unpaid leaves for professional educators are set forth in the article, which is Article seventeen point one point one point three. And, um, are intended to be used only for their, uh, their intended use. The, uh, part in the employee handbook states, the PPS employee handbook states, employees are permitted to work for other employers as long as it does not interfere with their job performance with Portland Public Schools. Employees with a second job are expected to work their assigned schedules. A second job will not be considered an excuse for poor job performance, absenteeism, tardiness, leaving early, refusal to travel, refusal to work overtime or different hours. So those are the two things that you were referring to.
Are the half principals going to be, um, disciplined for not following policy?
So, Mr. Shulton, I'm going to ask you again to not cry out from the audience and yell. And I also want to say, I, I really want to keep this hearing in the public, but if it is disrupted repeatedly, we are going to have to, to, to take it to a different format and I really don't want to do that. So again, let's just continue with the conversation without shouting. So.
Back to Director DePass's question. Could you repeat your question?
My question was what changed? So it sounded like there were two approvals to attend this event that were fine. They were approved and I was wondering what changed in between the approvals and this year. So I'm looking at why the change. Why, why would it be not considered this year when in the previous years it had been okay? I'm wondering what's, what's going on. I, I can give an example, an example of, um, you know, we've, we've, we've approved, we have approved this travel twice before. And then this one was denied. So I'm wondering what's changed between previous years and this year's request.
So this, so this is what I would say.
And so that, that's what I was trying to get at, like the exact, like if it was a behavior or what it was that changed to cause the denial this time.
Are you asking?
I was really wanted to hear from the, from the administrator who made the decision, like if something happened in between. I'm just curious about that.
Ms. Ryerson, are you available to speak?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I can't speak to the context for the previous two administrators and why they made the decisions that they did. Um, I don't know if the fact that we were in online learning possibly during that had an impact on the decision. Um, I simply in the fall, when the request was made, uh, and the request was, I'd like to go do the residency. So can I go do that? I said, well, the only way you can do that is if we have a sub in the building because our students need to have a sub in the building, um, in your classroom. Um, and then when you look at the leave types, that leave doesn't, is not an option. So I simply was sharing that information with him and that I didn't see how he could take leave to do that.
So there was no definitive no.
So Ms.
And I, I made sure I had a sub.
So Ms. Ryerson, can, have, when the issue of a definite answer of no, he can't, or yes, he can, was that clear?
I felt that it was clear. I was trying to explain that because there would need to be coverage and there was not an oper, there was not a sub, not a leave that he could take for that, that I was saying this is not something that is feasible to do with your leave.
So, so at that point, since there wasn't, um, as defined in the employee handbook and in the bargaining agreement, there wasn't a leave that was applicable to the purpose.
Which is why I wanted unpaid for the rest of the residency, but I used sick leave when my family was sick.
Well, you, well, but you said you were sick, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
I took, no, for, in January, I took the half day at work because my family was sick. And I, on my way home, I stopped at Odyssey and I signed in. Again, when I'm a PPS employee for another school, I want to be accountable and hold myself accountable. Because I didn't need anybody from Odyssey saying, hey, I saw Mr. Dean at our, our school today. And then to, to, you know, to the public, I'm, I'd taken a half day. So I still signed in and I gave my music to my, uh, teachers, my instructors for my dance company. And I began conversations with other teachers. I have a thank you card from them saying, thank you for behind the scenes work because I was behind the scenes with the Odyssey School Program. I was not in front of kids instructing, teaching. I was behind the scenes. But I, my, my company needed music to make all of that happen and I was, I had that.
How, how long were you at Odyssey during that trans, transaction?
Their, their hour, I was probably talking for at least an hour. I, I talked a lot.
Mr. Keller, did you, did you report to Odyssey when you were sick on January eighteenth?
I, I did. I had my mask on. I, I still need to, uh, drop off my music. I left my house to drop off my music and to talk and, uh, not talk, I'm sorry. And then I was, um, I need, my, my director at that time needed me to take pictures. I have photos and videos of the date of question that I was there, yes, taking just videos and pictures from afar, but I was never engaging in any conversations and without my mask, I took those precautions.
But you were there for approximately an hour. Did you, were you concerned about exposing the kids to any illnesses?
Ye, yes, and I, I still did what I felt was, you know, that the proper way is going with, uh, your mask on, not to try to expose anybody. That's what, it's kind of softened throughout, you know, these months of COVID. Um, it's a common cold now. And so I just wanted just to have my mask on because my, my test came back positive, but at that moment, I felt like I can still deliver the music and take pictures and videos as my director asked me to.
Um, I'm curious, going back to the questions about the request for the leave. Um, and I think, um, staff have sort of explained what's in both our policies and procedures, but also in your collective bargaining agreement with, you know, the PAT has signed off on. And it states pretty clearly that you're not allowed to take, um, you know, either sick leave or, or unpaid time in order to perform a second job. And again, that's something that, that your union has agreed to, uh, with the district. And I'm, I'm curious, do you feel like you violated that collective bargaining agreement?
I feel like I did not. I needed, I asked for clarification on what is the definition of a second job. I'm a pay, I'm an independent contractor for everything that I've done outside of a W two. So it's a seasonal thing. And my, my ask last year for five days unpaid leave that got approved, in that email to the admin team last year, I stated, I have to move these five days to during school time because I was asked to judge in North Carolina. So there's a track record of seasonal times that I'm asked to do my career job. And this, I've been doing this since nineteen ninety-seven.
And I guess, I, you know, just maybe another question. Did, did you get paid either for your work at Odyssey or the judging in work in North Carolina?
I got a stipend for Odyssey, yes. That's through the company of North Star. And, uh, I did get paid to judge the, the, the competition.
And, and, and then also by having sick leave on those days, you got paid twice for that same time.
Well, so that's my question. I did not submit a short leave form for any of those hours in March. I, to me, that's unpaid if you don't claim it. And so it shows up on my paycheck as paid to me and I'm, I don't know where those extra forty-eight hours came from because I didn't claim those.
And maybe I'll ask that question of staff because I, I don't remember, and maybe I miss, I don't remember seeing that investigative report, but,
It's not in there.
Mr. Keller saying that he didn't claim sick leave, but I think as, as part of this, we're showing that he did claim sick leave for that week or that it was just that he called in, he called in sick, am I right, for that week?
For the week of March, yes. He shared that he, he was ill and he was asked to demonstrate what the illness was.
But I did not claim those hours in ASAP, I mean, on my short leave form. Those hours were not claimed.
That's the question I'm looking to find out as well. Did he, um, and I'm sorry, I can't be there. I apologize. Um, but did he actually claim the sick hours? Did he physically submit a form saying that he was sick on these days and he wanted to be paid sick time? Or did we receive the information that he said that he was sick? So therefore we, um, we submitted sick hours for him. That's one thing that I, um, I wanted to note. And, um, the other thing I wanted to ask is for, um, for us as a, a, a team, if we have two years of him asking or being, being able to do this and for, for whatever the reason, they were able to work out the, to work out the type of leave it was, does that, does that sort of set a precedent as to, um, even though it may be under bargaining?
Can't hear Mr. Green.
What's that?
Can you say it again, Director Green? The audience was clapping for you.
Uh, I'm sorry. Um, what I heard, I hear him saying that he's done this for a couple of years and that, um, that does this not sort of set a precedent that what he thought that he was doing was the way that as a district, we have become okay with because he's been able to do it for two years? Um, and, and so, and I, and I only bring that up because we have mentioned, you know, this is a violation of the, um, of the bargaining agreement. Um, but he's been allowed to do this in spite of the bargaining agreement for, for the last couple of years. So I guess my question is, um, does it set a precedent that says that as a district, we, we were okay with it?
I can answer that. I would say absolutely not. It doesn't set a precedent. I think the piece here that we have to remember is that it is clearly articulated in the handbook. It's clearly articulated in policy. And Julie Prince Ryerson gave the rationale in terms of why this would be, uh, not a suitable request. And it goes against, again, what is articulated? I can't, it's hard for us to comment on what's been previously done or the rationale in regards to that. That's something we will absolutely look into, but at the same time, Julie Ryerson, uh, clearly communicated that, um, he could not go. That it interfered with his duties, interfered with his duties as a teacher at Oakley. And that's very, very important that we have to remember and it's specifically stated, you know, in the handbook and in the CBA. And I think we just have to, that's an important piece that we can't forget. And I would say this too, and we'll follow up in regards to that documentation piece. But when a teacher says, I am sick, then we take them to say, you're sick. So regardless of, uh, did I fill this out or that type of thing, again, coming back as well to the, the ethics of the whole thing, we take your word for it that you're sick.
I want to put, push back again. Thank you. Um, Julia Roberts, and I, I apologize if I just called her the movie star. But she did not clearly state that he could not go. She said that she could not see, she didn't see how this, um, what the lane was, so to say, that, that she didn't see the pathway forward um, of how, but she did not say, you cannot go, you cannot do this. She could not see how this worked with, um, with the types of leave that he was going to be asking for.
I think the, the assumption though is that our employees are expected to be at work, um, during the school day. And so, um, if they're not going to, then they need a specific authorization that has been approved for them to be able for them to be away, or they need to show that they're, or they need to have been sick or something. So, um, I, I think Sharon Reese is coming up here, but, um, it, it's, the assumption is that you're going to be at school serving the students.
But unless there's a funeral, I mean, I work for a public agency also. And unless there's a funeral or something happens in the family, or there's a lot of reasons that, um, that people take leave with the blessing of their supervisors.
But this was not one of them.
Right. That's why there's, that's why our bargaining agreement has really clear parameters around what are considered appropriate leaves.
I'm struggling with this narrative a little bit. I mean, he was told that there was no appropriate leave. That's a very clear statement that there's no appropriate leave.
But there was the leave the prior two years. And somebody, I mean, if that's not the case, somebody should be held accountable for that as well.
And that's something that we can certainly address with the superintendent, whether someone should be held accountable. But that's not the situation with Mr. Keller. He was told that he can't take the leave and he took the leave and lied about it. So I'm struggling with this narrative.
So I just wanted, I want to add some clarity because there are two different timelines, right? There's a residency at Odyssey and there's a competition in North Carolina. On February 14th, Principal Ryerson emailed that the leave request was denied. The, the stating specifically that the dates, three, 22 to three, 24 are dates are part of the signed schedule for staff. Thus you will not be able to attend this competition. That, that was clearly stated in an email on February 14th. The question about, and I want to be very, um, clear, we're, we're parsing some language here. I think that, that, uh, the piece that is very important is that employees engage with their supervisors about when they're not going to be at work. I understand that this is being portrayed as, uh, that perhaps employees don't need to do that. And then it felt that it was, um, that Mr. Keller felt that that was not something he needed to do. I disagree in, in the work that we're doing. I have to request time off and I asked my supervisor, Chief Franco, to approve time when I'm away. I have to account for my time as an assistant superintendent. I think that all of our employees have to do that.
Do you get approved for everything that you request?
So I have a question.
Do not always get approved.
Hold on, hold on. So the, on February 14th, the email that she's speaking of, do you recall getting that email?
Yes, um, I, I have it right here in my records as well. And my question to Julie Ryerson was, I do understand what the handbook is saying. My question about the jargon is, a second job is considered an ongoing job while having your first job, correct? The situation wouldn't be a second job that is ongoing. I teach at a dance studio in the evenings in Beaverton as my second job, so I understand having a second job. I also know PPS dance employees that have been able to travel and teach master classes, et cetera, while still having their position that doesn't fall just on weekend days. How does this balance work? I a hundred percent value my job and position with PPS. And knowing our handbook is stating a second job is considered anything not associated with PPS and framing it to have poor job performance hurts me and the folks still professionally active in the arts. Because it cannot all happen on a weekend.
When, what day, when did you send that email?
This was February 14th at 6:42 PM.
Did you get a response?
I did not get a response.
So, Mr. Keller, when you didn't get a response, did you decide to take it upon yourself to take that week and go to North Carolina? Even though you had not, you had been told that that leave was not appropriate?
No. What happened was I was sick for that day, that week, I'm sorry. And I communicated to my director in North Carolina, I cannot make it for these days. I'm sick, cannot travel. How can we still work this out? And I, I got support from my director, hey, I called the airline because they do all the bookings. I don't book anything myself. As a performer, as a, as a teacher, I get paid and asked to go travel and do what I do. And that's them book, doing all the bookings, chauffeuring hotels, all that stuff. That's, doesn't come out of my pocket. So, I'm sorry, were you going to say? So for the dates in question, I was in town because it's the weekend days. And yes, I'm telling my, my boss that I am sick, so I'm home. For the weekend, the 24th through the 26th, off of school time, that's when I, I saw that I can conduct my business the way that it's presented. I can do, I can conduct anything after school time. And so I didn't have to report what I do on the weekends.
So, and, and I'm going to be really blunt here. I'm, I'm struggling with your credibility in this because you were not able to produce a plane ticket that showed you went overnight on Friday night. We have someone who was at the competition who stated that you were there judging on Friday. And all of that also is based off of the earlier credibility issues about telling us you were sick and then not telling us you were sick and where you were in Odyssey. And so I, I hear what you're saying, but I'm, I'm, I'm struggling to, to believe you as a result of this pattern of, of deception.
If I, if I might just add one, one piece about the plane ticket. This was raised during a meeting with Mr. Keller. He was requested, um, in an email from Sarah Fitch to produce the documentation exactly as you're describing, Director Holland. So that request was made, um, uh, and has not been produced at this time.
Okay, I just have a couple of questions. So he mentioned that he emailed back on February 14th at 6:00 PM. I don't see that in our documentation. So I wanted to know about that. And also, did you get a response to that email that you sent?
I did not get a response from that email, nor my TOSA. Because I immediately following.
Gotcha. So I just, I'm just curious of, of what was the response email, why we don't have that in this paperwork?
I think I'll rely on some, if, if, and it's possible that we could produce that piece. But, uh, I'm not sure as to why that's not in there. But if it is, if, if that was the response, we absolutely can produce that for you.
Director Lowry?
So, Mr. Keller, I'm wondering, you've talked about the arts professionals. And if you are reinstated and it is made clear that you can no longer take, um, things at Odyssey or be gone from school to judge or teach master classes, would you honor those very clear, uh, boundaries, uh, as part of your employment?
Absolutely. I don't want to be breach of any contract and I, I clearly stated that. I just need to know how to balance it all. And I've been asking for clarification to the higher ups as my TOSA and my admin. How do we balance it? That's all I, I want to know.
I'm just curious on that balancing piece. So as an employer, I'm not worried about how my employees balance their other jobs. I, I, I understand it, the way that the, the employment market works. But as an employer, it's not my responsibility to balance your, your life, right?
Understood.
So I just wanted to make sure that you're clear on that piece, right? That it's not our job to balance, to help you balance. It would be great as an employer to help with that, of course, but that's not our job or responsibility. So I just want to make that clear. A second thing, I want to move a little bit away to some of the other stuff that they had in this packet. And I want you to explain some of this, uh, some of this to me.
Okay.
So on the information around, um, the licenser, I can't remember the name of that organization. But there was something on here as far as there was incident that a student punched you in the chest. And then it was also one in here, a couple of, about going into the women's bathroom to tell kids to get to school. Can you, I mean, get to class? Can you elaborate on those two for me, please?
The punching of the chest was, I was going for a high five, it was dodgeball. At that time, the PE teacher and the dance, we had a dance versus PE dodgeball. And we did that kind of every Friday as a, a fun day, Friday. My dancers won and I wanted high fives from everybody as I always do. And he was upset for losing, so he punched me. And so out of reaction, as I was midst, in, in the middle of my step and he punched me, I was off balance. So I just grabbed, it's just in the moment, just grabbed like this. And so he fell. I did not push or make him fall. He fell as I grabbed, because I was falling back. So he did a stumble, I did a stumble, I just didn't fall. He fell and I just was standing over him like, why did you punch me? Like, and that's when the adult, the other teacher, uh, was in the corner of the gym and reported it. So there's no other adult present besides myself and what the other teacher saw at the end. About the.
I was just going to ask, just in the series of those, were all of those based though that students and their parents filed complaints?
I, no, I don't believe that the parents.
I guess maybe that's a question for the district staff. On those earlier cases, I'm assuming that, um, the dignity denying comments to students and the twisting the student arm and the hurting the student in the dodgeball game, I'm assuming that those were based on student and family complaints, not somebody else complaining.
So, um, the, um, there, these are a number of incidents that happened over a number of years. So, um, one piece of this, um, was a, um, if I, if, I, I have to go back to how it came directly to, to, for us to be, to end an investigation. I think the piece, um, that we're looking at, it was, it was around, um, the, the, interaction in question was investigated, um, with HR and, and the principal at the time. A letter of, um, reprimand was delivered and, and a hearing and, and process, the disciplinary process was followed to stipulate, um, the, uh, what happened. As part of that process, uh, I think it gets wrapped into, I think, to Director Holland's response, some of the information that happened with TSBC as well. And that, um, so that was part of the written reprimand from, um.
Right, but, but, but generally, if like, if a student said, hey, I'm fine, like it was no big deal, or like it was just a mistake or something like, you probably wouldn't have had something that would have gone to TSBC.
Correct.
That student ended up signing my wall and saying that I'm going to miss your dance class.
Which, which student was that?
The one that punched me in my chest.
And what about the other ones?
I'm going to address that one. About the entering the, the girls locker room, um, there was two, there were two men, uh, the PE teacher, myself. And we always say, man on the floor, man, man coming, just to, you know, let everybody know what's happening. And I was in charge of locking the girls locker room door, um, to keep their belongings safe while other kids, students were able to access that locker room. Just to use, because there was, there's two parts to the locker room. There's the facilities, the stalls that you use, and you go past that and that's where the lockers rooms are. And I always want through things to be safe. Um, I just didn't want to expose. So when all my dancers are in my classroom and I have all the doors, I use, now I say, someone go check the, the locker rooms and make sure everybody's out. I cannot enter this locker room. But at that time, we didn't have that, you know, established. And so I go in and as I'm locking the door, there were students behind the showers. And they peeked out too soon and I saw them. Are you skipping class? Okay, no, come on, let's go. And then as I'm leaving the, the locker room is where I see tennis shoes in the stalls facing each other. And so I just said, whoever's in here, come on out too. So as a teacher, I'm looking at the, the optics of students skipping class. And no way in my, being a father, uncle, brother, would I ever make a student come out of the locker room if they're having, you know, female issues. That was, that was not, um, I had no, no where of that, that knowledge. And so what that student did was go home and tell her auntie, Mr. Damon yelled at me, I was on my time. And that, that aunt went to HR and then I was placed on leave immediately for that. After all that was said and done in the investigation, you know, the students were in the hot seat. So they say their narrative and then I say mine and I was able to come back to work after all of that.
So, Mr. Keller, I'll, I'll, so the Teacher Standards and Practices Commission did its own investigation of this. And I just want to read this, and you did sign this in, in March of 2021. "The conduct described above constitutes gross neglect of duty as it incorporates," and I'm skipping some of the OAR numbers, "as it incorporates use of professional judgment, recognize the worth and dignity of all persons and respect for each individual, skill in the supervision of students using district lawful and reasonable regulation, rules and regulations, unreasonable physical force against students, fellow employees, or visitors to the school. The commission's authority to impose discipline is based on ORS 342175. The commission adopts and incorporates the findings of fact and imposes a public reprimand among Damon Keller's Oregon education license and puts you on probation for two years." That sounds very serious and it doesn't happen to every teacher who just happens to make a mistake. What's your response to that overall? Do you find, do you think this investigation was not adequate, was a farce? What, what was happening here?
You, you can write that as gross neglect, but again, if I knew, and maybe I'm not, I'm not supposed to know. I don't, I'm not asking to know of any of my students in their development stages. Let me know, no. And so that was her narrative of that time and in that moment. That was her defense. I can't say anything against that. No one can. I didn't know. That's all I can say. I didn't know that the student was going through that. I, I did not approach the student like, you shouldn't be doing this while, if, there was no conversation that I had with that student one-on-one besides, come on to class. That was all my interaction with that student that I had. So I, for the gross neglect to come forward, which is why I stated, consider this narrative that that's, that's not what I am about.
So I think there's a, um, part of what happened with the TSBC piece is that it was a stipulated finding. So there is some additional information that was provided in the, uh, letters that was not, you will not find in the stipulated finding because it wasn't, it wasn't challenged. Mr. Keller did not challenge the findings and did not ask for a hearing with TSBC. So I wanted, I, I, the question of how did this information surface? One piece that surfaced was from a vice principal's observation of Mr. Keller's interaction with a student and putting a student's arm behind her back. And the student saying, ow, and asking him to be let go. Another example is that a student, um, did come and report a concern about Mr. Keller coming in to the, um, to the restroom. So what was offered in that moment was, um, a statement that, uh, that Mr. Keller said, man on the floor, warning the girls that he was entering. After you looked in the locker room, you passed a bathroom stall where student one was located. Student one reported that she heard boom, boom on the stall door she was in. She reported that you hit the stall twice with your hand. I know you're not using the restroom, hurry up, come out. After, and she, uh, ended up, uh, coming out. Again, on a, on the, it's subsequent day, a similar interaction happened with a different student. The student reported to, um, the administration that I know you guys think I'm effing stupid. I was using, uh, the student responded, I was using the restroom. Again, the students were responding back to this, to what is being said to them. And I have plenty of experience, the statement the students provided was, I have plenty of experience. If your feet are like this, pointed, with the point, toes pointing towards each other, you can't take a, an S word or a piss. Is the language that was, the students reported being used with them.
Did not say that.
So I'm going to, there's one other, other piece in here that I would just say that this is, students reported, uh, use of the F word frequently in class. Students reported, um, uh, throwing of shoes or items at them to get their attention. This is the totality of what went into and what was shared with, that went into the stipulated judgment. But it's not in the stipulated judgment because the detail was not challenged by Mr. Keller.
So, hold on, hold on, I don't, I don't need no help. Hold on, I got you. So, okay, okay, that, that's not what we're talking about here. So when this, these allegations came up, why didn't you challenge?
I was advised, like, again, when I, when I say, please consider this. I was advised, like, again, when I, when I say, please consider this narrative. I, at that time, it was the first time I was ever approached with all this information. And I said to my, my lawyer, these kids are in the hot seat. They're going to say whatever they need to say to get out of the hot seat. I'm the adult with the full picture. And as my defense, I'm telling, it's what, with Ms. Calvert was saying, it was all the same day. When I was bringing those kids out of that shower, the back part of the shower, it was the same day that I banged on the stall. Then, as everybody's entering my room, same day I'm addressing the students, do you think? Yes, I, I said that word. I didn't, I'm not, not denying that. I'm human, and I made a mistake, and I apologize for that mistake then. So I did use that language. Are you effing, are you serious? Are you effing kidding me? Because I have gone through days of trying to get my kids. Just be honest. Just talk to me. If you're not, if you're not on it, if you're having a day, let me know before I start my class. So that's my communication, and that's where all my students know. Hit me up before I start, because I have expectations, and I have standards. And I have done those for the ten years I've been here at Portland Public Schools. The other incident about this twisting of the student's arm, there's no way on this green earth that I would purposely twist a student's arm in front of my boss. That's just not going to happen. What happened was, the student put their hand on my shoulder, and I touched my, that student's hand, and I said, please, take your hand off me. Then she wraps. That student wraps around, and then it was like an ow, but there, there was nothing that I did. So what someone looking at it can say, oh, you, you made that student say ow, and you had their arm twisted. I didn't do any of the twisting. Like, again, I stated, I'm the reactor, I'm not the culprit.
Additional questions?
How can you make us take accountability for your unsafe...
Go ahead, Director Constan.
I, I was just going to clarify. So there's nothing, so the, nothing still pending or before TSBC, or nothing from the new incidents that is under review by TSBC? It was just their determination that Chair Scott referred to that was a two-year probation, and then that has expired? Or is there anything current?
So we received, looking for the right portion here. Give me one minute. There is, there is something pending before TSBC right now.
I completed my courses on classroom management and behavior. I passed. And I do want to say for the record, one of the teachings in the classes that I had to take for TSBC approval said, a teacher's testimony was, I take my students out in, in the hallway all the time and talk. That's what I thought I was doing when I left my thirty-one students in class during the warm-up. And all my students know that they get graded first quarter. You need to know the warm-up. So, I don't have to always be there. I can start correcting them and watching them instead of being the director. And so I left my students during the warm-up to address the student outside of class. Because I was told that this student doesn't like, the attention needs one-on-one redirection. That's what I was doing to leave my, my class.
Mr. Keller, how long were you outside of class?
My first song of the warm-up is maybe seven minutes, so I came back in the middle of that. You can say four to five minutes.
And, and a student was injured during a fight in that time, given that...
It wasn't a, it wasn't a fight. They had a little squishy ball, and they were just playing around. The kid didn't like it, kid got mad and just kind of slammed him. But there was no...
That's not a fight?
A play fight. They, they've been friends since kindergarten, so that's what the moms told me.
And a student was injured. Knowing that, did you make a mistake by leaving the classroom?
You can say, yes, I made the mistake by leaving the classroom. I was dealing with another student. My, again, my expectation is my, my students will do the warm-up once that music starts. That's my expectation.
Happens all the time that educator steps out, all the time.
Mr. Shulton, I don't want to have you removed, but please. Go ahead.
So I think...
His pattern of behavior, what about your pattern of behavior?
Where's the hearing on your behavior and on the administration's behavior in targeting an educator?
A few schools with black kids in them.
So I can shut the hearing down.
Where's the hearing on Ms. Ryerson's use of the N-word?
How many of the complainants are white?
Go ahead, please.
I just wanted to clarify, we, on, on May thirty-first, PPS received a request from, a subpoena from TSBC regarding the, Mr. Keller's completion of the requirements. At that time, as of May thirty-first, TSBC had not received notification that he completed the stipulations of his, of the probationary stipulations.
And so what are, what happens in that instance? They have, they have mandates attached to probation. If they're not met, what, what happens from TSBC's standpoint? Is the licensure revoked, or?
It's, it's part of the licensure renewal process. So, Mr. Keller is in the midst of renewing his license.
I have approval both dated April twentieth of me completing my TSBC required classes.
If you had approval from April twentieth, why would we have received a subpoena at the end of May to the contrary?
That's for you guys. April twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, I sent my certificates. This is best regards from SolicitD Ice Fire. Received, thank you. These will be accepted for probation completion. If you come before the commission again, the lateness of submission of these documents will, will be noted. And that was, again, dated April twenty-four, twenty twenty-three at ten oh three AM.
So, sorry, Deputy Superintendent Calvert, it's unclear to me what that subpoena is saying or what that status is.
The request is, is stating that, that stipulations have not been completed and to, for us to share working files, that if there's anything in, in the possession of building supervisors, then we need to supply that within fourteen days of receiving this.
And was there, and have you?
We have not.
We have not. So, this is the first that we're hearing of it. And again, this, this letter is dated May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
They have not received what they needed to receive to meet the standards.
Correct, and that's from TSBC. And so it's not, that's documentation that we have not received. This is something that they are stating to us.
Because presumably, in a situation like that, if we have a teacher under PPS employment that is in that kind of status with TSC, TSBC, then the next step is that they inform the district that that teacher's licensure is being revoked, right?
Yeah, the steps at TSBC, I'm not familiar generally with the steps that they take, but I'm sure that that is a possibility, yes.
Great. Additional questions from the board? Okay, seeing none, this matter will move to a vote on June twenty-seventh, and we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for being here.